All right, welcome everybody to the Student Achievement Work Session. I see Superintendent Dr. Williams on and Board Member Terry Shuda and Board Member Terrence Hurd. We are going to get started because we have another work session that needs to begin. And now I see Board Member Jim McCosey. We have another work session that we need to stay on schedule for it to start at 6:00. So tonight, we are going to have a presentation on adult education, on the Adult Education Division. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Williams to introduce our staff that are going to give the presentation. You're muted, Dr. Williams.
Just when I had a perfect introduction, I was muted. Thank you so much, Honorable Vice President Larry Scott. Tonight, we are joined by quite a few members of our Adult Education Department. And I think often when people think about the Buffalo Public Schools, they forget that we have a very vibrant department that is there specifically to educate and provide support and training for our adult populations. And so I'm looking forward to hearing tonight from some folks who are here. I will ask our Chief, Dr. Reynolds, to introduce her team and to jump right into the presentation.
And thank you so much, Dr. Williams. At Mir, would you please advance the presentation? And you can advance to the first slide, please.
Thank you very much. And so, thank you again and good evening Superintendent Williams, honorable board members, colleagues, families, and community. Now, my understanding is that it's been some years since the Adult Education Division has provided a board presentation. And so, we are pleased to share with you an update. We are saddened that our remarkable, systems-oriented Taskmaster Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Alyssa Maffaletto, she's unable to join us for the presentation as she continues to recover from the flu. However, tonight, I am joined by two extraordinarily dedicated, hardworking student and family-centered team members, Adult Education Director Mrs. Amanda Valake, and Community Resource Leader too, Mr. James Jimmy Barnes. We are also joined by a phenomenal former adult education student, Mr. Derek Zazula, who will close out our update with a brief testimony. Now, as we're all aware, for the past several months, our CFO has reminded us that we are quickly approaching the end of our ESSR funding. Additionally, as we consider next year's budget, our superintendent is requiring that we all earnestly examine our practices and analyze impact. That EDIT, coupled with feedback received from the New York State Education Department, has opened the door for our team to take a deep dive, ask difficult questions, in some instances reconsider historical practices that may have been very well-serving in the past but no longer make sense in a post-COVID era. As our team begins to make decisions regarding the 24-25 school year and beyond, we will continue to evaluate as we question why, strategize as we contemplate how, and keep our students at the forefront of decisions as we prioritize human capital. During tonight's update, we will share with you qualitative and quantitative data that addresses what the Adult Education Division offers, who we serve, where we're going, and why you should consider BPS's Adult Education Program. Director Valake?
Thank you very much, Dr. Reynolds. Good evening Superintendent Williams, honorable board members, families, and the community members to hear this presentation. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share the valuable information about one of our integral divisions to the great work Buffalo Public Schools does for the community. If you would please advance the slide. So what does Buffalo Public Schools' Adult Education offer? So before I start, I want to let you know that our division's mission is to provide organized and sequential high school equivalency diploma classes, adult literacy, community, and continuing education, and career and technical education programs that are relevant for all adult students. The division ensures that adult education is accessible to students seeking alternative career pathways and lifelong learning opportunities. We are a very complex organization, serving thousands of community members at various locations. We have currently around 130 employees consisting of teachers, career advisors, clerical, school psychologists, et cetera. Most of these employees are part-time, and I do want to take an opportunity here with all of you here to commend and be, celebrate the great work and dedication that our staff has for our students. So our three core areas of study that we have here are high school equivalency preparation, which will lead you to take the GED exam, English as a second language, and career and technical education. We have over 30 different career and technical education programs. Not all are offered at once because many are sequential. So right now, we have probably around 20, but more will come following that. We do have 17 site locations that are located throughout the city, and they are housed in many community organizations and three district buildings. This is done by design to allow easier access to our services for many that lack transportation. The majority of our sites are located on bus lines. In addition, the community organizations that we are housed in have various programs and resources that help our students with the obstacles that they have in their lives. After COVID, we applied to become a Pearson Testing Center, allowing us to provide the new online GED exam. We offer GED testing to our students and all of the state of New York twice a week. There is a lack of testing centers in New York State, and thereby, Western New York and Buffalo Public Schools, obviously specifically, is helping the rest of the state achieve our GED outcomes. We offer national certification courses such as Microsoft Office Suite, HVAC, Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning. We do offer state licensure courses such as automotive inspection, cosmetology, and barbering. We offer city licensure courses which include city, excuse me, civil service keyboarding, facilities maintenance, and chief and steam engineering. Of our local employment training, we do offer medical office, computers, and cleaning industry training. Some of our community education courses include welding, British auto repair, carpentry, horticulture, plumbing, and hands-on improvement. All of our programming is guided by community and the business needs based on jobs that are in demand. If you could please advance the next slide. So the Adult Education Division continues to seek new opportunities for our students and the community. There are so many great projects we are working on, and I'd like to highlight a few of them for you. As I mentioned, our programming is guided by community and business needs. Through my work on an advisory committee for the Buffalo and Erie County Workforce Investment Board, our division has developed valuable partnerships and cross-collaboration. Most recently, I set up a meeting with Executive Director Jacqueline Hall and John Slinker from the Workforce Investment Board, and Dr. Maffaletto came with me to discuss a new initiative they have with the Buffalo Employment Training Center. This program is the AIM Hire Program. It is for youth workforce development, providing employment, training, college and trade, school transition support, financial management, mentoring, and leadership development. We are very excited to bring this opportunity to our youth program at the Career Collegiate Institute. We are trying to supplement that program as well. In addition, we have added computer instruction in the afternoon with resume building, job readiness for our youth in the afternoon. We have a valuable partnership with SUNY Erie to help our students enter college. All of our high school equivalency and higher-level ESL students are duly enrolled in SUNY Erie. This allows them access to the services on the campus such as computer labs and gym facilities. The students also receive support and resources from SUNY to expose them to different courses and careers. They also have the help with the application process and assistance with the financial aid process. With Access VR, Access VR helps students in the state. They assist individuals with disabilities to achieve and maintain employment, to support independent living through training, education, rehabilitation, and career development. We have currently provided services to their clients on standardized testing and evaluations. This year, we successfully bid for two new services. They have awarded us additional funding to provide these services in career exploration, assessments, and job-seeking development. We established the Advisory Committee in July of last year to solicit feedback from Buffalo Public Schools and Western New York leaders. I have listed some of the people who are on our board, on our committee, rather. You see, we have Department of Social Services, the Workforce Investment Board, Buffalo-Naiata Partnership, SUNY Erie, the Youth Bureau, the Buffalo Employment Training Center, Access VR, Director Harris from Buffalo Public Schools Career and Technical Education Department, and we include our Adult Ed Education Leadership Team. This Advisory Committee has been a wonderful opportunity to discuss the challenges and seek input. Additional perspectives from these community leaders have given us a fresh approach to enhancing the services that we provide our community. Next slide, please. So who do we serve in adult education for Buffalo schools? As you can see here, we have, these are the demographics we have for this year. We have a beautiful cross-section of different diversities. And as we all know here in Buffalo, we're a wonderful, beautiful, diverse community, and it is reflected in the students that we serve. Over the last five years, we have grown to serve a larger proportion of English-language learners. As Buffalo is one of the largest resettlement communities, we partner with these resettlement agencies to offer educational services in advancement to either post-secondary education, workforce training, and employment. Our division celebrates our diversity in numerous ways throughout, sharing each other's culture. Our staff have truly embraced our district's CLRI mission. A few of the highlights I want to share with you include, we send out the district's CLRI resources and lesson plans monthly and support the inclusion of culturally responsive learning environment. We just had, recently, we just had a coat drive for our students, and we took advantage of that opportunity, and we created a warm and welcoming environment by posting signage that was representative of our student demographics in their languages. Additionally, beginning next month, the Buffalo Rehab Group will be offering a speaker series to the students of our youth program. Each speaker will be from a diverse background and will showcase their diversity in the medical field and inspire our students to see that they too can be part of that career field. Next slide, please. This is a slide to explain to you our enrollment process. We, by design again, offer the opportunity to enroll in any of our HSC prep classes, ESL, and career and technical courses in a variety of ways. As you see, we offer, you can call by phone and we will set you up. You can walk in, or you can go on the website and register online. Somebody will call you back and enroll you to an orientation. We offer day and night orientation for both HSC and ESL. Our career and tech is also the same, by phone, walk-in, or online. We offer our CTE classes mostly based on the semesters of the fall and spring, starting the third week of September and the third week of January. Our cosmetology and barbering students are duly enrolled in distance education as well. We have open enrollment to capture the student when they set their goal to continue their education. And we call them back when they call to set up an orientation and may not show. We call them if they show up for orientation and don't show up for class. We are constantly trying to bring them back in and encourage them to participate in our programming to help them. This past year, the State Education Department has required a more robust orientation process. We use this opportunity to inform students of all the different services we have, such as career advisement and partnerships with numerous community agencies. This has helped to reassure the students that we are there for them to help remove any obstacles to continuing their education. In addition, we use the opportunity after orientation to enroll them into GED.com, which is new, allowing them to be ready, for them to sign up immediately after orientation once they are ready. Some of our students show up GED-ready with a few months to go. Some need to take longer to progress through the grade levels. Next slide, please. So for this enrollment data, we've provided you a breakdown of the enrollment data for the last four years. The great news is that we are on target to exceed the 2019 pre-COVID enrollment numbers. As you'll see, we did see a substantial decrease in the enrollment due to COVID, which was similar to all programs throughout New York State. Many of the students, when we were during COVID, they lacked the technology that was required to participate in this online platform. However, when we came back to in-person instruction, we saw an increase as the community started feeling more comfortable returning in person. And again, I do want to emphasize the hard work that this whole division has done to be on target to exceed the pre-COVID enrollment. Next slide, please. So here are some of the data points we would like to share with you to extrapolate from those students that have enrolled. These are the students, right now, we have 2,411 students as of January of this year. The distance education students, you see, we currently have 313 more coming in daily. It is a very robust program. As we returned from COVID, many of the students and the teachers became more comfortable with remote instruction. Many of our adult students find it difficult to come into the traditional classroom due to lack of transportation, either working a full-time job and childcare, or all the above. So we previously did offer distance education. However, we strongly invested in the increased interest that we have from our students in this programming. So our division reassigned staff and marketed to students that would feel confident with this method of instruction. In addition to the reassignments, we sent many staff to become certified through the state to deliver this distance education. As a result, our Distance Education Department has tripled, allowing us to reach students that may not have pursued their education. The number of Buffalo Public Schools pre-K through 12 parents in our division from September to December is right now at 758. So looking at this data more closely helped us to know that we have many parents in our programs. To that end, I've been working with Director Rich of the Department of Family and Community Engagement to collaborate on providing services to help our parents of schoolchildren. The total number of GEDs that we have, our students have obtained for the first half of the year are 44, which is a great number, and that is at this point in the year. Currently, we have around 80 students that are at the GED-ready level that we feel could be prepared to take the exam before the end of the school year. Next slide, please. So Buffalo Public Schools, as Dr. Reynolds suggested, we have had to adapt to the new reality of where we are post-COVID and the economy. So our division is very excited to be moving in the direction that we are right now in the midst of many changes from state ed and the economy. There are a lot of new opportunities that are presented to us continuously. So to that end, our goal is to increase enrollment and retention while enhancing the growth in the capacity in providing alternative career paths and lifelong opportunities. Next slide, please. So we listed here areas of improvement. As Buffalo is the second-largest district in New York State, we work very closely in collaboration with state ed. State Ed Department has been meeting with us monthly to implement new requirements and remedy any outstanding concerns. During a recent visit that we had, the feedback provided helped us to implement new policies and procedures. For example, as you will see on the second bullet, to update the program information form. This is called the PIF. It is a master course list we have through the State Education Department. With a lot of new changes from the state this year, there were numerous staff-changing assignments. The state is looking at the PIF a lot more closely now for their reporting. To ensure more accuracy, I have implemented a course code change form of any staff change. This form is only signed by me for accountability, and our PIF is updated immediately with new changes. All of the other areas of improvement that have been resolved, as you see on this slide, and we will have constant monitoring of these recommendations. Dr. Reynolds, I believe, for you, the next slide, please.
Thank you so much, Doctor, or excuse me, Director Valake. And so, Director Valake has highlighted some of the areas of improvement, which now transitions us into the three core improvement strategies that we've prioritized for this year, finances, education, data processes, and communication. Now, given her extensive grants background, our division lead, Dr. Maffaletto, has done a fantastic job this year, working very closely with Director Valake, our Adult Education Finance Coordinator, and the Grants Department to strengthen our financial landscape. In Dr. Maffaletto's absence, I'll provide a general overview of some of our improvement strategies. So when we look at finance, our overarching finance goal is to ensure accurate budgeting and accounting for all operations. A few of the action steps that we've either completed or are ongoing to move us closer to our finance goal include: placing teachers in correctly-funded positions with correct fund numbers, appropriately aligning grant requirements with positions, programs, and expenditures. We don't want to leave any money on the table, so it's important that we exhaust all grant dollars in order to enhance and uplift programming. With the end of our ESSR funding, it's also critical that we seek additional grants as well as other financial and human resource capital. So the AIM Hire Partnership and the Access VR RFP awards that Director Valake previously referenced are two such examples. Now with education data processes, whether called upon by the superintendent, state ed, or district staff, it is imperative that we have relevant data at our fingertips to immediately access when necessary. As such, Dr. Maffaletto, Director Valake, and other critical adult ed team members are diligently working to strengthen our education data collection, reporting, and analysis processes. A few examples include clearly defining the roles and responsibilities of each data team member, establishing and monitoring monthly and annual reporting metrics, conducting periodic data crosswalk with finance to ensure that we are fulfilling all deliverables, crosswalking program enrollment and assist data, assist is a state ed attendance portal, and also streamlining data collection and monitoring processes for vocational in our youth programs. Now, communication is also one of our prioritized strategies. Communication is such an important strategy to help us actualize our goal to increase enrollment, retention, and to enhance alternative career paths. Communication enhancement is a multi-layered strategy that has recently been tasked to Mr. Jimmy Barnes to lead in conjunction with a few very talented adult ed colleagues to reimagine and to initiate. Mr. Barnes?
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. Good evening, everyone. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, we are looking at communications from both an internal and external lens. To start, I wanted to provide a snapshot of some of the recent external marketing that the division has done. This has included print media, social media, event marketing, and grassroots efforts. Some of the highlights being partnering directly with the Buffalo Common Council for their winter preparedness event, which saw over 1,000 families come through its doors, working the summer festivals, including Juneteenth and the Pride Festival, and supporting our other BPS departments at Saturday Academies, the Parent Centers, and even the Summit. We also host a number of events ourselves, including a Partner Breakfast and a Career Fair, both of which you should all be seeing, save the dates for soon. Next slide, please. This year, the division has made a decision to rebrand, beginning with a new logo. Previously, the division has used the term "upskills" as both their logo and website. We found that many people did not directly associate upscale with adult education or BPS as a whole. With the new logo and marketing materials, we are hoping to cut down on that confusion and emphasize our place within the larger district. You can see both logos here on the screen, new and old. In the new logo, the imagery of a tree growing from a book is to symbolize growth through education. And to build upon that, we will also be utilizing the catchphrase, "Grow with us when it's appropriate." Next slide, please. Continuing our rebrand, we launched a new website for the division just this month. It's buffaloschools.org/adulted. We have two main goals of this site. First is to streamline all information, creating a site that is clear and accurate for our students. And second, we will no longer be using an external domain, which we had for previous years, and instead, we will live within the district's larger site, which is buffaloschools.org. And many of our students are parents of K-12 students. This will provide easier access to the district's resources that are online. While we understand the importance of external marketing, we are also placing a strong value on our internal communications as well. Our division is stretched across 17 locations throughout the city with over 130 staff members. So ensuring our staff receive accurate and timely information is key to our success. All staff now receive a monthly newsletter from Director Valle with updates and news from across the division. And there's also a monthly calendar distributed of our literacy's own events. In an effort to increase engagement opportunities, we've also collaborated with the Family and Community Engagement Department here at BPS, and we will be introducing a parent engagement liaison to the adult ed division. This will strengthen our communication with not only staff, but also students in the community, providing for additional touchpoints. Additionally, we are working on building the pride of our division. With a new logo in place, we are launching a pop-up shop of adult ed merchandise and apparel for staff. This will be live in the coming weeks for online orders. And we're also making a concerted effort to use real photos and stories of our students and staff in marketing. You will see this in upcoming billboards, a video, which is in development, and social media posts. You also have seen them all in this very presentation. This will help showcase the incredible individuals that make up our team and our students who grow with us every day. So at this point, I want to pass it back over to Director Valle, who will be able to introduce you to one of these success stories.
So next slide, please. So why Buffalo Public Schools Adult Education? Why would you choose us? Again, I want to thank you for your time to share the great work we do for the community. There's always a lot to learn about this division, but I believe one of the best ways is to hear how we make a difference in each student's life. Please allow me to introduce one of our very successful students, Derek Suzula. He and many others are the reason why you want to choose Buffalo Public Schools' Adult Education Program. Please welcome Derek.
And Edmire, you can stop sharing at this point. Thank you.
Hello. Hi. I'll briefly introduce myself. My name is Derek Suzula. I am a commercial real estate broker. I am graduating college with my degree in about six months, which I'm proud to say I'm Dean's List member. I am on a board, an organization. I'm entrepreneurial. I have a couple ideas and business plans that I'm going to be deploying out, which will provide jobs and opportunities for a lot of people, which is good. What this program offered to me was opportunity to really believe in myself. Without this program, there is no Derek Suzula. I put myself in a position that I was able to change not only my own life, but my family's life, and also to friends, too. I have some friends that saw my progression and my path, and, you know, one of them started his own business now, which is going to provide opportunities for the city and the people within the city. And that all started from this program. Without this program, there's no me. And what it did was it gave me confidence. I grew up in, you know, rough childhood, you know, and I didn't have a lot of confidence. And this program really proved to myself that I can finish something at a high level. And it kind of snowballed effect and started rolling down. And through that, it rubbed off, and it's like a ripple effect on other people. And it's done a lot for other people. And the way I kind of see this program is, you know, when I was going through a really, really tough time in life, my mom, single mom, worked two jobs. We grew up. There was winters. Pretty recently, we didn't even have heat in our house, and I can proudly say I'm sitting in heat right now. And, but, um, my mom never gave up on me. She never gave up on me, no matter what. And that's how I view this program. This isn't a time to give up on anything. This is a time to double down, because there's a lot more Derek Suzulas out there, a lot more. And I'm trying to help as much as I can and show people what we can actually become. There's so much. My current career, I didn't even know it was a profession. By the way, you know, I graduated and got into everything. I didn't even know this was a thing. And I've been able to build phenomenal relationships with some really great people. And none of this would be possible without this program. This program, you know, it changed my life. I wake up every day, and I'm so happy to be alive. I wake up and I make my own decisions. I make my own choices. And I feel like I'm not suffocating. I feel like I take control of my life. And that's something that I'm forever grateful for, for this program. Because without this program, you know, this is, it's silly, but this is a real thing. So when I took my exam, I had to drive all the way out to Oleum. I used to have to pull over on the thruway. I would avoid the thruway because of my anxiety and just in my self-confidence. And a major win for me was just getting to Oleum and not having to pull over. And that was a win for me, even before I took my exam, before I even passed it. And that's just some of the ripple effects and the confidence builders that this really instilled with me. And I've met a lot of great people within the program that really, you know, people that believed in me. And that goes a long way. And I just, if anything, I'm just so excited for even more what this program can become. I think there's a lot more Derek Suzulas out there. And this program helps not only bring those out, but then also contribute back, which then makes a lot more and more and more. And that's how you make change, collaboration, and, you know, people waking up happy with hope. It gives people hope. I've become a beacon of hope for a lot of people. And I couldn't thank this program, Amanda, everybody, everybody involved. You know, you changed my life, my family's life, and a lot of my friends' lives. And, you know, without all of you, I don't even know where I'd be right now. And I'm so grateful for that. So, you know, that's kind of my quick story, and just thank you all, and thanks for hearing me.
Mr. Suzula, we are thankful to you as the student ambassador, as one of the student ambassadors for the adult ed program. We thank you so much. Thank you, Director Valle, Mr. Barnes. We are open for questions.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Reynolds, Director Valle, and Mr. Barnes. And especially Derek, thank you for joining us. Congratulations to you. You certainly showed the worth of this program. And it means a lot to us to hear that testimonial of what you've experienced and where you've come from and where you are going right now. So thank you so much, and congratulations to you. Colleagues, we'll go in alphabetical order. We have 20 minutes remaining before our next work session, so be mindful of the time so that we can start our next work session sharply at 6:00. President Belton Cotman, any thoughts, questions?
Thank you. Happy New Year, and thank you, Derek. You put wing up. You give us some wind underneath our wings to keep us moving forward. And thank you for that. This is what this is about. I just have a couple of questions. The financing associated with this program, I heard that you said it comes from the state and it comes from grants. Wasn't there a way of financing this in the past, particularly the Barbara program that was set up to make sure that we received dollars from another source? I thought it was something that Les Leopold put in place right before he left. And I was surprised to hear that that wasn't in place anymore. Can you explain what's going on with that?
Yes, I can speak to that, President Cotman. So we are still currently in good standing with them. Before we left, before the pandemic, we had met with the heads of the CFO and our Grants Department and Budgeting and Finance about the additional expenses that it would incur with, it's the COE, the Council on Occupational Education. It would allow us to offer federal financial aid for students that already have their diploma. So you have to have your diploma in order to receive this. And the costs incurred with that, because in order to deliver the federal financial aid, we had to have three separate, pretty high-paying staff salaries for, in order to deliver that financial aid. So at that time, the district was a little hesitant on pursuing that because of that cost with the exorbitant cost of running the cos and barbering program with the lease. And in addition, there were concerns from the CFO and budget about legal concerns if things were violated and penalties incurred and the additional cost of continuously bringing COE to the district. We still are in good standing and can pursue that if the district feels it's warranted.
Okay. Do you have a breakdown of how many people are in, or how many students are in each of our study areas? Because when you gave me the number, when you gave us the number of 2,411, and you said you're working toward, you know, your pre-COVID numbers, which is, you're just a little bit off, so that's nothing alarming. But I'm curious to know what's happening with our barber and cosmetology, what is it, cosmetician program? Okay. I'm curious to know what's going on with that program, because that used to be one of our biggest programs that we had.
Cherry? I apologize. Sorry.
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So one of the new requirements from the State Education Department this past year, a little over a year, has been in order to collect the EPI money, which is the Employment Preparation Education Funding that we previously collected, the students must be duly enrolled in a separate literacy class. So that proved to be problematic for many students without a high school diploma to be enrolled, or adult students to be enrolled in a full-time cosmetology and barbering program and concurrently work additional 15 hours a week in a separate literacy class. So we have done a tremendous amount of marketing and encouraging and promoting the program. And currently, we have, we had to start this up new with the state ed directive. So we currently have nine students enrolled in cosmetology. And barbering, we used to have students that would come in with a high school diploma, but many of the students that are coming in that are interested have a high school diploma. And if they don't, they are not interested in a full-time barbering program and a literacy class due to adult lifestyles with work, childcare, and whatnot.
Could I just add just a couple other things, too? Just in our conversations over the past several months, we believe also that the existing location of the program may be a barrier for some students. The program kind of sits on the, kind of the border of Kenmore. And so we are having conversations with CTE Director, Mr. Harris, and considering the feasibility of relocating where it's more centrally located and accessible to the students of the city, in the city of Buffalo. And what that will also help with is, because I mentioned at the onset that we're really, you know, needing to assess and prioritize our fiscal resources. So the programs, while they've been successful, we historically have run a deficit of upwards, and correct me if I'm wrong, Director Valle, $200,000. And so we've been, for the past couple of years, we've been able to utilize our ESSR dollars to pay the lease, but that will no longer be an option for us. So these are all of the things that we're considering as, because we certainly don't want to sunset the program. The program will remain, but we're really looking to find ways to amplify it so where enrollment is at capacity and that we're also not having to contend with fiscal deficits.
Okay. Do we provide any daycare facilities?
We do not.
Okay.
We do not. We have explored that through my tenure here in adult education. And we always have the hurdle of really liability, liability with providing the childcare. It's been a difficult hurdle for us to overcome. We would welcome any type of, you know, opportunities and suggestions to remedy that. Would be a great help.
Oh, okay. The laptops, do the students get laptops, or are they, you keep them at your facility?
Yeah, our students, we keep them at our facility because many of our students enroll, and they, and some will drop out for various reasons, life changes, employment, moving to a job, childcare, being, maybe disappointed with their level of testing. And so it's concerning to hand out a laptop initially. Even if they're in our program, they may drop out immediately.
Okay. And then you had that problem. Okay. Finally, Madam Superintendent, while they were talking, I was thinking about opportunities to capture people, our, going after our customer base, our people who can work with us. And one of the things I thought about was when someone becomes a member of the adult ed, or when we bring students on, that the welcome letter from the district includes that we provide these resources in addition to that. We are, you know, that includes and tells people about that. Because I think that that's an opportunity to educate people about the things that we're doing. And I think it would be a big plus if we consider that. I am thinking of a letter that came years ago for one of my grandchildren who was accepted in a private school. And the letter was intense. It explained what they will do and what they will not do. So I think we have an opportunity. I also thought about us doing some sort of a survey, or if, once the letter goes out, maybe once a year, put stuffing information in our students' backpacks, talking about the resources and the services that we provide. So, you know, and certainly Derek, we can, I think you got a career also in merchandising and publicity, because you're very credible. And I believe you could sell water in Florida. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. Vice President Evans Brown, any questions?
Hi, not so many questions. Good evening, everyone. Derek, thank you for such an eloquent presentation. Congratulations to you. You're just about done with your bachelor's degree. That's impressive. Thank you, Director Valle, for a detailed presentation. It's one of my first since I've been on this board about adult education. One of the, I have a question about your numbers. Are the 313 distant learning, I believe you indicated, participants counted in that 2,411, or is that separate?
They are counted in the 2,411.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then I was also impressed with the marketing piece, because "upskill" to me seems to be a separate entity of the Buffalo Public Schools. So I'm so glad that that's going on to remedy the, remedy the division, because it's such a thorough adult education division that it should not be treated as different. "Upskill" to me was totally separate from the Board of Education, to be honest with you. So I'm glad to hear that, because I think it would also help with, you know, the rebranding label that you have, local that you talked about, and also the communication, because a lot of people probably feel like me. I'm on the Board of Education and really did not make that differentiation. So thank you, and keep up the good work.
I agree, Dr. Evans-Brown. Next, Mr. Board Member Hurd.
Thank you Chairman Scott, just a couple. First, I'd like to say thank you for the presentation. Director Valake, you're doing a wonderful job and I'm happy that you're able to help cure so many different minds. And to Derek, good job, good job, good job. I just, I really appreciate, you know, your passion and what you're saying and the projection for your future. And, you know, God bless you all the way on your journey and that you can, you know, help others also when you get to the top, okay? Also, did you receive any dual enrollment classes while you were in the program or going to college? Do the program?
Are you talking, are you talking to me?
Yes.
No, so I'm actually online at Bryan and Stratton.
Okay, okay. So, my question is, how are we projecting our dual enrollment program? I know we have a couple colleges that we partner with, with this program. And how are we projecting our adult learning program with dual enrollment?
How are we protecting our, with the dual enrollment, projecting?
Yes.
So, projecting, I apologize, what is the question again?
I know a lot of our colleges offer dual enrollment programs and our district uses dual enrollment on a number of different courses as we, you know, work with our children, go to higher education. Are we doing that also with our adult education program? And how are we projecting that?
So, we, we have a financial contract with SUNY Erie to collect money to support our adult ed students to matriculate. However, SUNY Erie is fully aware that we partner with Bryan and Stratton. Bryan and Stratton is not a site right now, but we work with Bryan and Stratton to, that is how Derek knew about it because he had worked with Chantel as well. So, Chantel is one of the career advisors who promoted different opportunities. When we do, but with Bryan and Stratton, we offer distance education to those students. The concern was that we weren't getting a full classroom at Bryan and Stratton in the last couple of years. But I have, I'm in the works of working with Jeff Trito from Bryan and Stratton to begin a program again after COVID, hoping that we can regrow that. But we still refer our students, the clients from Bryan and Stratton to our distance education programs. And then, also, I believe to your point, when we have college fairs, we bring everybody in. We bring in SUNY Erie, we bring in Buff State, we bring in UB, we bring in Bryan and Stratton, Alfred State to showcase all the different opportunities all of our students can matriculate into if they want post-secondary education.
Okay, okay, thank you. Just a couple more questions, maybe a little bit adjacent from that. But I do see the number of students that you do have, which is remarkable. And also, I'm glad that, you know, people are taking this opportunity. How many students do we have that come from the city of Buffalo or Buffalo Public Schools? And how many are coming from the outside, is like regional?
Well, so, I mean, as far as our youth program, we have a lot of, many of our students have come over the years. Currently, our youth program has around 80 students. 20 of those are still on the district's dashboard for completion rate that have attained their, so when I had told you that there are 44 students that completed their GED, around 20 of those students are from Buffalo Public Schools that got their GED just this past half year who will help the district in their completion rate. And Board Member Hurd, are you asking how many of the students come from the city of Buffalo? Is that your question?
Yes, that's the question, how many are regional within the city of Buffalo, yes.
So, we, almost all of them, Board Member Hurd, almost all. Once in a while, we will have an arrangement with different districts that will say, we can't serve this person, would you please serve this student? Other than that, we, Buffalo Public Schools, with the Employment Preparation Education that is, that funds us, our largest funding stream, holds us to only serve those in the Buffalos, just Buffalo zip codes.
Just a couple last things. I do appreciate rebranding, it's very, very, I think it was needed. And it did, you know, have a lot of people questioning of what program it was and who was actually directing it, where it was coming from. So, that's really creative, whoever thought of that. And also, you know, every time you visit the Adult Learning Center on Virginia Street, you know, it's always, you know, people there that's helpful and, you know, willing to accept people in. So, I just love the character, you know, that they display for the program. The last thing, I would just ask a question is, is about, you know, we're bringing in career-minded people and I've seen some of the courses that you, that you have, like in heating and ventilation, the steam engineering, you know, the welding program that I took a look at, and even the home improvement. And those are type of jobs that people in a community like to do hands-on and, you know, and you can get work everywhere in the city of Buffalo. So, please help continue with those and let us know how we can help build these programs. And, and thank you again, I'm just gonna hold it there. But thank you for your, for all your wisdom and helping with this program.
All right, Board Member McCosey, any questions?
I do not have any questions that I'm used during this time. I just really appreciate everything that I've heard so far. This is more information than I've ever gathered in my entire existence on this board. And as a parent and someone who's very into the community and talking to folks on a daily, I am hoping that once all the rebranding and the materials really come into play that there's an actual, not, I don't want to be included as board members. I feel like we should have almost our own set of materials in order to be able to go out. Like you have what you do, your robocalls and all of that. But I would love to see like the board members have, and this is across the board, their own specific like avenue of how to communicate all of our programs and everything we're doing and New Day, New Year, all that, let's start with this. How do, how does the board members, whose job it is to communicate with our community, with our constituents, to make sure that these are available? Give us something to be able to put on our webpages, to be able to, you know, when we have our own forums, a little more than just your standard that's sitting on the website. Like, give us what you would give anybody at a seminar and how you would sell. So, that's my only real ask of you all. And Derek, you're very inspirational. And dude, if I can get you to come and present in front of, you know, different groups that I speak with, I'd be, I'm gonna be reaching out.
Board Member Rivera, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to uplift the kind of work you're doing where you're thinking about how to streamline, how to do outreach in order to serve our students better. And I really appreciate that. And Derek, thank you again for your inspiring talk.
Board Member Shuda, any questions?
I would like to just echo my praise for the team and to Derek. I do think that we could take a look though, Amanda, at giving a net, we have a social worker that works with the students that perhaps could help them find daycare through social services or maybe a coordination between the Say Yes Scholars for the three-year-old program. And maybe if, you know, we coordinate with those two things that perhaps we can get some of the support for those young families. We did it at the high school level and I think that perhaps we could do it at the adult ed. And I'd be happy to talk to you about those ideas at any point. So, that's all I have to say, but thank you.
We don't have the word counselor or social workers, they're called career advisors, but state ed prohibits us from calling them counselors and giving advice. But we, the career advisors are specifically designed to meet with the students for their goals and to remove any obstacles to getting their education. And that is definitely one of the obstacles. And we send out referrals. So, I would be happy to connect and get more information about the Say Yes for the three-year-olds. Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
And last, we have Board Member McKecon who was on the phone and it looks like she just joined us on screen. Board Member McKecon, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, Larry, sorry. I did text you to let you know that I did not have questions.
Okay. So, that concludes this work session. But before we do conclude officially, Dr. Superintendent Williams, do you have any last thoughts?
I just want to thank the team. Dr. Reynolds and Director Valake and Mr. Barnes and Derek. You know, Buffalo Public Schools is always hiring. I just want to say, we would love to have you, you know, as a part of our team. You know, there were a few things that were mentioned. I know that Board Member McCosey mentioned, you know, having some of the information archived on, you know, one sheet. And we're certainly working on doing something like that right now. We know that the Board will be going on some community meetings. And so, we're working right now to create a profile sheet. So, it'll be a one-pager that will have, you know, quite a bit of demographic information on K-12 as well as adult ed. So, as much as we can squeeze in on that one sheet, we'll be trying to get that together for the board members as you begin to go out. And for Board President Koppin, I love the idea of, you know, that letter and beefing things up. I know that there is a scholarship fair at the Delavan Greider Community Center that's coming up. I've been meeting with some of the staff there and certainly any place that parents are bringing children, we want to have information on our adult education programs available to them. So, we'll see if we're able to just get a table from adult ed there so that we can do some cross-recruitment with other things that we're doing, so. Taking things to another level, just thank the team, thank the team. You did a great job.
Excellent work. Great, great outcomes that we're seeing. All right, this officially concludes our Student Achievement Work Session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. And I will turn it over to Board Member Shuda for our next work session under Educational Support.
As we continue our journey with the Council of Great City Schools, we are going to use this time again tonight. We have, I don't know if you had the opportunity to see the files that were sent by Leslie to kind of outline the process. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to see if the Superintendent, has anything you'd like to say as we, before we get started?
No, not really. I want to say Happy New Year to Leslie and welcome her onto the platform. You know, for listeners, there's been, I think, quite a bit that has been continuing to happen in our work with the Council of Great City Schools. So, just welcome Leslie and you have my full attention.
Cindy, what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it to you as the chairman of the committee that we're working on the implementation. And I want to thank Cindy and Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown. We work continually throughout the month. And I think that you can frame this for us.
Sure, happy to. My apologies if there's a little bit of noise. It's kind of loud where I am at the moment, but when you're juggling multiple hats at one time. So, I will be handing it over to Leslie in a moment. However, we are, as we had mentioned, I believe in December, and we've mentioned it at least once, I think, so far in January, going to be moving into the space of community meetings and engaging with the community in various ways and levels. And Leslie, tonight, she walked the implementation team through earlier week what this looks like. And our goal today is to kind of go over this process with the full board and kind of talk through what some of our next steps will be. Leslie, I am going to hand it over to you, just, I'm wise if that's okay. And let you go ahead. Thank you.
All right, great. Hello, everybody, and Happy New Year. Thank you, Dr. Williams, for the greeting. Good to see you guys. Curious, who are we missing today? Paula Woods? Does anybody know if Ms. Woods is joining us?
No, she will not be joining us.
She was excused. Okay, all right, very good. I will follow up individually with her. So, one of the things I would like to do with you guys, I literally want to walk you through steps. And if I can, I think I can share a screen on this. I see the little button there, if y'all, if I have that permission. I'll do that in a minute. But I wanted to thank you all again for your time in December. We had a brief three-hour meeting with all of you. And I think we got through a lot there in terms of getting on the same page about the work this year coming up. And so, it is the new year and we are going to begin. And one of the most important things in this transition, your choice of transitioning to a board that is more focused on student outcomes is your understanding of your role as representatives of the community. You need to go out and find the genuine heart of what the community, the large community, not any individual slivers of the community. What is the community interested in? What is their vision for the students in Buffalo Public Schools? And you also need to listen for their values that they need protected along that journey. So, what we are asking you to do is to put together a plan for your work this first quarter into second quarter that will help you with that listening and then will help you translate what you've heard from the community. And then, Dr. Williams and her team are putting together, as she said, some data about the reality for students in your district. We need to understand what is the, you know, what are the critical needs of Buffalo Public School students? Based on the current data that we're seeing, what is the root cause analysis for that? But you all have to have something that you can translate to the community as they're listening so that you all are on the same page again about what is the reality for students. So, Dr. Williams and her team are working on that, that data sheet. It will be a little briefer than you probably would like. You're going to get more data on the back end of it as we go deeper into, after you're listening, as you go into the process of setting goals based on the vision you heard from the community and guardrails to protect the values you heard the community want to protect it. So, big buckets of conversation there. These are things in terms we've been over before, but I'll keep coming back to them if you, you know, they are all in the Student Outcomes Focus Governance Manual and in the book, in the Great on Their Behalf book. So, anytime you are, you know, wondering what we're talking about, please don't hesitate to either grab me or refer back to that. These are very important. And as you know, we talked about, one thing I do want to get clarity on from our meeting last month was I had sort of lightheartedly perhaps assigned a couple of, a couple of the duties coming up to a few of you. And I want to just sort of get clarity on that now. One of the, one of the processes that we're going to go through, this is post the community listening and the goal and guardrail setting. But one of the things you need to do is part of becoming more focused and more effective in terms of supporting students is really to look at what you have around you. What are your practices? What do you do? What are your behaviors? What, you know, like, what are all the things that you're holding on to? And have an open mind about analyzing whether those are actually being effective for students. So, we have a couple of buckets that we put those, you know, those analyses in. And I just wanted to step back to that request and make sure I heard correctly. So, the, one of the processes that we wanted to go through was a committee diet process so that you're really analyzing how you come together, how you, you know, how you spend your time together on your committees, what those are set up for, and how do those serve your needs. And I know that I had, Lawrence Scott, you had agreed to maybe jump in and sort of head that work. And I just want to get clarity on that.
Yes, and I, Ms. Grant, I have read the document that you shared. I've taken some notes. I am looking through our bylaws. I have some thoughts, ideas that are going through my mind, but what
I have some thoughts, ideas that are going through my mind, but what my thought is, is that maybe having this as an item in a future work session for us to first evaluate our current committees. And my, my thought is, is to use the questions in that document that you provided for all board members to go through to determine whether a, a particular committee should continue as is. For board members, though, my next step is just to, I'm going to put out probably by the end of this week just a document with all of the committees that I'm aware of, and if there's anything that's missing from there. And I want to just make it clear that there's a difference between a board-authorized committee, a district committee that maybe some of us are serving on, but essentially that is authorized or operated, controlled by the superintendent and the district, not the Board of Education. And then third, we serve on all types of community-based organizations. Those are not board, board-authorized committees. So Erie County Association of School Boards, Conference of Big Five, those wouldn't be a part of board-authorized committees that we're looking at. So more to come on that, and I'm, Leslie, I'm certainly digging in and getting to work on it.
Very good. Well, thank you for your commitment to do that. All of this is extra work for all of you on top of what you're currently doing. So I, I really appreciate that. And don't worry too much. I really, I want to set these up. I want to get your minds sort of, you know, oiled and ready for this process. I don't want to get too deep into these processes before we do the more critical work of the listening and the goals and guardrails. So any, any, you know, curiosities that you have around that, and you want to sort of start to float and socialize it with your colleagues, that's great. But don't feel like there's any deliverable on this until we get beyond that process. So, but thank you very much for, for stepping up and agreeing to do that. And I, I wanted, if you will, have a conversation. Let's get through this first initial list, and then if you would, work to, and Jim McCosey, Board Member McCosey? Do I recall you saying that you wanted to work on that one? I can't recall.
The diet, committee diet?
The committee one, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, great. So Larry, excuse me, Board Member Scott and McCosey, y'all will work together to, to get that going and happening when we get there, okay? Thank you very much. Another part of the process that's really critical and that we have not done to, to really with any fidelity yet is a time-use evaluation process. And because we're not really, really in a formal place where you're analyzing student outcomes, student outcome goal results, we haven't done that yet. I do want you to get into the practice of that, and that, so time-use evaluation. That practice I would like to get going now. Dr. Evans-Brown, I think I had recalled you saying maybe, and I don't remember if it was in jest or not that you were interested in that.
Could you repeat that, Leslie? I'm so sorry.
Yes, we are, we're going to need to start doing time-use evaluations?
Oh, yes.
Okay, okay, all right. And again, don't think you need to know anything about this yet. I'm just trying to get, you know, a commitment down on paper from what I recall. So Dr. Evans-Brown, and was there someone else that wanted to second her on that?
I think it's Sharon. Sharon Genley.
Okay.
I said I would second her, and I also asked you, isn't that something that the entire board can do? And you said that we would grow, we would grow into that or something.
Yeah, I, I want to put, I want to put together a little, you know, a team that's going to really analyze it and make sure it happens, right? So ultimately, these processes need to be owned. The, the artifact from it, the doc, the actual documents, the, everything you're doing needs to be collected, catalogued, and, you know, shown to the public on your website somewhere so that they understand the process you're going through and the accountability placing on yourselves. So that would be someone on the staff, and we'll talk about that later, but that would be, you know, a board services-type role. Bottom line is, we want to make sure that when you're going through this transition to more effective practices, to more student outcome-focused practices, that you don't carry those along with you when you do retire, roll off the board, whatever. That those practices become practices of the system, not of individuals. So, so while I'm assigning you guys these things right now, I just, I want y'all to sort of kick up the process, get it started, own that it happens when we get there, and make sure that, you know, that it becomes, again, your practice. So thank you two for that. I am coming back to you, though, President Dalton Cappan. Congratulations. I have, actually have an agenda evaluation piece that needs to take place, and I was going to assign that to you as the president. So if that changes your mind on the time-use piece, you let me know. I don't have to have this in stone tonight, but I will be coming to you for the agenda evaluation. And if anyone...
Okay, so how much time is involved in the agenda evaluation? Is it something I can do? I was wondering if maybe Mr. Hurd might want to do the, help Dr. Evans-Brown with the time-use evaluation.
That would be good.
We can definitely discuss it.
Okay. All right, so, thank you. And again, we don't have to have these down tonight, but I would like to, I just want to get an idea about it. And then another piece that we had already started a little bit with the Implementation Committee was to do a policy diet, policy review, and part of that would be the board operating procedures. So that big chunk will be, that will be a lot of work, and again, the Implementation Committee has sort of already started that. So Board Member McKeckin, are you prepared to, okay. And then if you, whoever you decide to recruit and bring into that will be very helpful to you in that process. So again, I've got these. I appreciate your commitments on these. We're not starting any of this in earnest right now. We're in a transition right now. Thank you all for, for being willing to do these things. The most important thing you are going to do is this work in the next few months. If you don't, if your heart's not in this, it will be seen. If you're, you know, trying to sort of cowboy it and do it a little bit differently than we've got it planned or whatnot, it'll, it will show. There's a very, a very structured way that we want your listening to the community to be done because we want you to respect every single group that you're listening to with the same messaging so that everybody understands exactly what you're trying to gather. It's not in one community, they got, you know, some other understanding of what you're doing and why you're doing it than they do in another. We want you to be very consistent in what you're trying to gather from the community during these listening sessions. So while, you know, people may go, oh, you just sound like robots. Well, that's okay. There's a reason for it that, you know, again, is trying to present a very unified ask of your community. So, um, let me see, can I share a calendar? Does that show up? I don't know what screen y'all can see. Can y'all see that?
They show that.
You don't have to read it. You don't have to read it. Just, I'm just showing you the idea. So what I'm, what I'm doing here, and this follows along with our Implementation Timeline, which is the big sheets document. But what I would like to do, we're right here on the 10th of January. What I would like to do, I've already talked to Dr. Williams. Her team's already working on this one about the where are we now and how did we get here document. So they're working on that, and that would be something that accompanies you when you go out to the community. What I want to start tomorrow, or as soon as we can, is the individual list, and I'll explain all these more in detail in a minute. But the individual list would be something that I give. Each one of you has your own, and your job is to put down on the list, everybody, every group, every, you know, every entity that you feel needs to be heard to have the voice of the community. So once we get your, I don't want you influenced by each other. I just want y'all to do a big free-thinking dump on, you know, who, who, who do I understand to be community? Who do we need to listen to to have a proper feeling that we listened correctly? So those individual lists, we'll, we'll give you those. I would love those to be back by next, like, within a week, next Friday. Once we get those back, then we'll, we're going to go into the consolidate. I'm going to work with y'all, a couple of y'all, to consolidate that list. We'll just put everything together in one giant list, and then you can look at it and go, oh, there's 200 meetings. Then you're going to decide which one of those groups, you know, there may be multiple groups that could be heard together. You're going to decide whether those are meetings you go out to, in a, engage in another meeting that somebody has already set up, like a, you know, a community meeting, a city council meeting, or something like that where you present, or are those meetings that you're hosting? So the consolidated list, I've got another week for us to get that done. And then we're going to start scheduling those meetings. And I would, I've got you a week or two to schedule those meetings. Contiguous with the consolidated list and the meeting schedules, we're going to get your script drafted. And we're, you know, we're not listening for things that are, you know, like, kind of wildly different. There's just some big, basic ideas that we want to listen for. What do people want? What is their vision for a BPS graduate? So, but we're going to work with you to see what you as individuals, as a, as a group, need to have in that script. What do you, you know, are there any specifics that you really want to hit? Ideally, we come away with a few, very few questions that you're going to be asking for responses to because we have to do something on the back end with that data. So we're going to draft a script, and then we're going to finalize that, and then we're going to have script practice. So I've got some work sessions in February. Actually, I just have them this week, and I will send you all invites to that. You can do it in groups of two or three or individually. I've scheduled a few times there, but I'll get y'all to sign up for that. I'll send you a form. None of y'all need to be taking hard and fast notes about responsibilities right now. I just want to go through this. But anyway, that work session, I really need y'all invested in that script being consistent. I'm also going to work with you to get a slide deck together, so you'll have a brief slide presentation that you can send out to people, you know, or, you know, present during your meetings that walks them through what you're doing, why you're here, what is this work you're doing, why are you, you know, why are you doing something different? It also will hit on what's going to be a major piece of your time, will be your customer service piece of this. What do you do when people come to these meetings and need, have a customer service need? That is something that the superintendent and her team need to take care of. We'll have a, a response for you there, maybe. We'll see what it is.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Grant. Have, have this already been created with other districts that you could send to us for review? Or is this something that we specifically tool after we take a look at?
The whole process? Or?
The scripts that you're talking about?
Yeah, no, no, we, we, yeah, I'm not sending you somebody else's script. We will, I mean, we have done this process, yes. And the reason it's built the way it is is trial and error. But in the script that we start with will be similar to ones that other districts have worked with, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but it won't be, I'm not, yeah, we're, we're, this is going to be individual to Buffalo, so, yeah. So, yeah, the slide deck you'll have, you'll have a, an understanding about what to do with your customer service issues that come to these meetings. The scheduling of the meetings, that is your responsibility. It's not the staff or the administration's responsibility. That is the responsibility of the board. So y'all will be emailing people, inviting them, them or their group, you know, personally to, to come and meet with you. And you need to explain in that email what the purpose of it is, so we'll work with you on that. We're going to have a, I see we have another work session on the 7th, so we can go over. We can, I appreciate y'all having these meetings already, your committee meetings, and then we will be able to touch, I guess, every time you have these, we'll be able to touch a little bit on this work. And then if there are other things that we need to do, we can, we can get that done as well. So we have, then you begin the listening sessions. Right now, I have that scheduled, hopefully to begin the 19th of February, mid-February. I've got it down through the middle of March, March 15th. So that gives you about a month. There can be outliers there a little bit if we need, like, if there's a group you really want to go in here, and they're just not convening until, you know, after that a little bit. But I don't want you to leave this window open so long. What is necessary and what is it really important is the communication about these meetings, about why you're doing it, and about how important this is. And I know you have a, a lot of support and help from the district in terms of communication and being able to help you with that, putting it on the website, you know, like, who do you contact? Do you put it in the paper? Do you put, you know, do you go on a TV program? What do you do to tell the community, we're coming and we want to hear from you? So you're going to have to, we'll work that in as well, what your communication strategy is. Another thing that we're going to do is put together, we'll put together a form where you collect this information so that the information and data you collect, the understanding you get from people, is consistent so that it is, is data that's able to be analyzed, right? And that will be a Google form or another survey-type form. And ideally, what would be great is if you put a QR code that links people back to that, and that QR code is shared far and wide. We have another district that was handing them out at farmers' markets and, you know, just printing up postcards, and we had one district that made a video. A couple of members made a video, had the QR code at the end of the video. That's something that could go, you know, widely on social media. So this is your time to get creative and, you know, like, I always dreamed of being, of being on TV. Just this is your, your opportunity to start thinking about how word out. Oops, there we go. How you can get the word out to the public that you want to hear from them, so. Once this is, I've realized this is, this is a lot of work, so. All right, did, I don't know if, no, hang on a minute. I'm going to reshare. So that's kind of the overview of the calendar and the schedule. It is a lot, and I just want y'all all to be prepared for that. It's totally not undoable. This is probably, may be one of the most satisfying things you do. We've had board members say that. This is where it really felt like the work you were brought in and came in to do happened. We have a lot of different pieces that go into that. Any of the meetings that you're hosting, which we call engagement, where you're bringing people to you that you're, the board is hosting, you want to make sure that you're providing necessary facilities, ADA compliant, that you have, you know, whatever you need, safety, security, officer, whatever is there. Do you need childcare for this meeting? Do you need waters? Whatever you need to host, that falls back on the district, so y'all need to make sure that you're communicating very tightly with them around that. Do you need translators? So you need to, you know, do not go out into the community and act, you know, we've got a great yellow community, and you don't have translators. So just making sure that you're well-prepared and set for whatever you think may be coming so that people do feel welcome and heard. The, well, let's see, I can get into now, I think, the list, if you want. So literally the list I'm going to send you tomorrow or tonight is just simple. You'll just put your name down. You don't need to put your district. We know who you are. And then just start thinking about what is the name of the group or community or organization or group of people that, again, you feel needs to be part of this process, that needs to be asked and heard as you set the vision for the district? What type of organization are they? And then this is just a simple pull-down. Is it a meeting that the board hosts, or is this something that you would go to their meeting, a community-hosted meeting that you would go to? So, very simple. This is the list. And again, we're doing this. I want y'all, each individually, to think, don't, you know, like...
Hey, Leslie, we, we can't see the list if that's what you brought up. We're seeing your, your...
Okay, there we go. Does that work?
Okay.
Yep. Technology, it's a great thing. Okay. So anyway, this is, it's just a very simple spreadsheet. You're going to each get one of these. Just do your, you know, put your big broad, who is the community cap on, and get to work, so. And then we will, again, consolidate the list, and I'll give you instructions all along the way. But when we get to consolidating the list, hang on. We don't need to look at that. When we get to the consolidated list, again, I just put everything into one. You'll probably, hopefully, five, every single one of y'all have a PTO or PTA or a student group, you know, that you all, there'll be multiples from your list. We'll consolidate all that. We will probably need to ask you, are there, again, meetings that we could host that are, you know, three or four groups together? But we, you want to whittle your list down to a manageable size. We'll have two spaces where, for you to sign up. For every single meeting that you believe as a board needs to happen, we're going to need a commitment from two of you to attend that meeting, to host that meeting. If two of you don't sign up and you don't feel like that's a, you know, something worthy of your time, the meeting doesn't happen. Or you find a way to... Or you find a way to consolidate that group into another or something. So this is a process for y'all to, to, again, determine individually and then as a group, what groups get listened to. Hang on, I got the dog bell going off. So if you have, if you have a concern about, you know, I had, I put this group down and nobody else is signing up with you, that's a conversation between you and your colleagues. We're not going to, we're not policing the list, that's y'all's. There's two jobs during the listening sessions. One job would be as the presenter. That would be the person, the board member who stands up and presents the script and goes over it and collects that. The second is the recorder. That would be the board member who is, their job is to listen during that meeting for anything that needs to be, that needs to be, you know, recorded. The survey, like, ensuring that the voice of the people you heard during that meeting gets into that survey, that gets into that data stream, so that we understand what, you didn't go have this meeting for nothing. And also be very cognizant with each other. The purpose of these meetings is very specific. If you have other things that you need to have a community meeting for, please don't conflate it with these meetings. Make sure it's just for this. Teresa, board member, she, do you have questions?
We are, can we be the recorder for our community? Or you would want us to stay away from?
Yeah, so I want you to mix it up. I want you paired with different people. You don't always go out, you know, Sharon and Ann don't always go out together. Mix it up. You have, you know, and I want you visiting different areas of town. So if you're, you know, always in Ferry District, then you got to do some other things. Yeah, so that's really important that y'all are able to shuffle around, work with each other. And some of them, you're the presenter and some of them, you're the recorder. So once you get to where you can sign up for those spots, you know, y'all will, it'll just be a sheet and y'all can go in and work with each other to do that. But it'll, you know, we'll, we'll work some things out on the back end if, you know, one person has five, 50 meetings and one person only got one. We'll work it out, so. But the point of this is that y'all, as a community, a group of colleagues, split and share this work equitably, hopefully, so. In all areas of the public, Buffalo Public Schools, in all areas of that, they need to understand that every single one of y'all is a representative for them. No matter if you're a citywide representative or district representative, your interest and your your efforts going forward are on behalf of all the students. So you're not just listening for one specific group. Sharon, did you have a question?
Yeah, the time length of the meetings, is it one hour, two hours?
That's going to be up to y'all, kind of, I think. The, you know, we can give you a, we'll help you with the script for the meeting. We can give you a quick script that, like if somebody says, okay, you can come to city council, but you got 10 minutes. We can, you know, help you get through what you need to quickly. I think, you know, if you are interested in having a longer form meeting, that probably is better, where you break out into, you know, groups. You have a large community group, you break out into groups. They have an opportunity to talk and interact with each other and, you know, so. I would think that all the effort you're going through to put together one of these meetings, you would want it at least an hour. But again, the, the charge to you is not to get into a big other listening session during this, that you're very focused on what, why you're there, so. At the risk of asking, what other questions do you have about this? And I know it seems daunting right now, but we're here to help you through the entire process. So what is, what's coming forward for you?
I was just concerned about getting on people's agenda. Usually we go to community meetings and events that they already have an agenda planned and getting on those agendas and see what education has to do, you know, what those programs are or, or what can we do. Generally, when we go to community, I can speak for myself, that questions come to me about the district and, and how can, you know, someone get help? Generally, it's just a parent that has, you know, a need inside the school that they said they reached out to people and needed a better response or, or just complaining about something, you know, that they, you know, been already taken care of. But if you go investigate it, that it comes fruition that the district already worked with that family or, or a person. So, so when we write these questions down and when we bring them back to the district, I can see a salute to work for the district and things that may have already been accomplished or done or looked into.
You're talking about the customer service issues that may come up.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine. What we did in another district was just set up an email. I mean, again, whatever your current customer service process is, you know, we'll follow that. If we needed to set up a separate email specifically for issues that come up during this, we can do that. But they're not, they don't go to y'all. They'll go to the superintendent and she will manage that. So that, again, we really do not want you to get engaged in problem solving during these meetings. Because you can't solve their problems, whether you think, the superintendent, yeah, yeah. So you need to be-
First part of it was getting on, getting on agendas in advance, knowing, knowing that the, what time and date that the community event is going to happen or, or if it's time for, able to have reflection or-
Yeah. Excuse me, if you have, you know, if, if there's something that's really, you've already got it in your mind and, you know, there's a meeting and you wanted to send a tentatively, hey, we're going to be doing this listening, you know, we're mid-February through mid-March. And you want to go ahead and send out a beacon to somebody, you know, like, we're hoping to meet with your group. You could do that. So just talk with your colleague, you know, have a conversation with a few of your colleagues. Excuse me. My ask of you would be that once I release the individual signup sheet, you get on that. Do not go beyond that deadline. It's a week. It's going to take you, you know, it should not take you that long a time. Get on the list, put your list together. We will consolidate as quickly as we can so that y'all can do that. Any, again, this is a y'all project, not a individual project. Y'all have to keep each other, sorry, you all have to keep each other concentrated on the work so that you're getting that done, that you're getting those, that list completed, so that you can move on to the scheduling.
One last question, while you say, I'm sorry for interrupting. Generally, there's been a practice of this district with, with this superintendent, the past superintendent, which I served with. You generally having someone from the district come into a meeting also to be able to answer questions or be able to, 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 to talk about, you know, maybe programs or, or other things that, you know, maybe promoting at that time, that won't be going on at all.
Again, the focus of these meetings needs to be like laser focused, right? You're going to become a board that is focused on student outcomes. You're going and doing a very intentional listening session based on the student outcomes that you're trying to get to. So we really want you to concentrate on that. I know it's a lot of work to put together a meeting and there's the temptation to, you know, oh, we've got so-and-so here from the district. You will have, you know, district employees who are helping you with logistics or whatever. You know, making sure that you've got some supplies or whatever you need, we'll talk about that. But their purpose is not to work, do their job that night. Their purpose would be just to service that the meeting happens well. I know that can be a bit frustrating because again, you know, it's like, oh, here's so-and-so and they could just answer that question. But we really want you to be very disciplined and making sure that that, whatever you're hearing, whatever customer service issue you're hearing, you're compassionate about, you're, you know, like, that you want to help them with that, that you get them to the superintendent so that she can deal with that with her staff, so.
Leslie?
Yes, sir.
I just want to, in our retreat, I, I made this point, I'm going to, and I want to make it again. I, I truly believe that within the district, we have an infrastructure to have community meetings. One of those being through our Saturday academies as well as through our four parent centers, which are in each of the four quadrants of the city. And I really think it's important for us to get, to have authentic community engagement with BPS parents and with BPS staff. And when we just focus on organized groups, sometimes they have different objectives and they aren't true represent, representatives of our BPS stakeholders. So that is my preference that we utilize what we have in place, such as our Saturday academies, our parent centers that I believe are still open in the evenings a couple days a week to invite anybody to participate from our BPS community. Because I truly think that's where you're going to get authentic engagement and feedback from BPS parents and staff on the ground.
Yeah. My guess is that you've already heard from the people that you hear from. They will be front and center in, you know, reaching out to you and letting you know that they need to be heard during this. And it's up to y'all to listen more authentically and differently than you have. So that will be up to you. Like whatever tools you already have set in place, I encourage you, yeah, use that. Like if you already have a, you know, something already kind of set up, the logistics for that, you know, all that set up, do that. But again, don't conflate the purpose of that time. It's all the, you know, the only request. So if you have a Saturday academy and you have people coming in, you know, for that, you can absolutely capture their attention, but it's only for this purpose, so. Is that responsive?
Yeah, yes, yes.
So I have a question, kind of, along those same lines. A couple of times now we talked, you've talked about going to meetings, but then also talked about putting together meetings, which, you know, I, it's kind of my skill set, so I'm, 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 I feel that. And I feel what Larry is saying 100% because, and I'm going to say it for myself and board members can admit to this or not, but we also are very loyal to certain groups, so we tend to listen to those folks more. And I'm going to challenge myself to not bring to the table the people that I normally talk to for that same purpose that you said. We've heard them already. So where do we get the genuine folks without, and Larry, I'm totally down with your, your mindset around this. But how do we bring people together when we have so many different activities in the Saturday academies that are already clamoring for people to enjoy them? You know, there's so many activities that people want people to come to and then we come and we take kind of over the, the purpose of the other activities happening. So how do we utilize that space to maybe advertise what we're trying to do and really put out there what we're going to do? And try and capture those folks to come to another meeting we put together that's just ours? Like, I just want to, I totally see the understanding of bringing groups of folks, not tied to everybody else. Yes, we're going to put everybody's name that we know down in our individual lists because they all have faces. But I think one of the issues we've all had is we listen to the first person that comes to us and not the people who are behind them because we never get access to them. We only get access to the people who speak for them. So, yeah, this is, this is my concern. And I totally share, you know, Larry, your point of view. And I just challenge us all to, to reach out to people behind the folks who are always in our face.
So I will say, thank you for starting all of that conversation with the I statements, Jen. And observing what we can do individually to change what we don't want to happen in the future. Very good reflection on that. One of the things I want to bring y'all back to, we did a self-evaluation. Do y'all recall that process where we went through the sheet and decided, okay, we're, we think we're here? For the, until we get the goals and guardrails, the real, you know, the big bucket of goals and guardrails adopted based on this listening, we couldn't move forward really off of the, off of the sheet into the work a little bit. One of the things that I talked to you about, hang on a minute. One of the things we talked about is working from the, from the blue column, from the best practices column. And just keeping that in mind about what you want to achieve, right? So if you, or when you pick up your, I know you have it laminated on your kitchen table and you read it every morning. But when you next pick up this document, always be looking at the blue column about the things that you could and should be, you know, aspiring to. And the very first one says, the board used a process, and this is about how you develop your goals and guardrails. The board used a process that included students, parents, staff and community members in a way that leads them to express ownership of the adopted goals. So I will put that out there. It is, you know, completely non-essential. You can do this listening any way you want. The gold standard would be that you put this together and that the community that you listen, you know, y'all feel like you have put together a process that gives you a community that owns these goals. So I think, I just wanted to put that out there in terms of, of where you're going with this, so. And I think all the things that you brought up, Larry and Jen, just about that are going to come into play when we do the consolidated list. Again, y'all work on your individual, if y'all get this, your individual list and you're comfortable with it and you've got it knocked down in three days, we'll go ahead and consolidate the list and we can get on to that. If you want to have another meeting, I don't know where you're at with your, if you want to have another meeting, is a group to go over and have a work session on the consolidation, we can do that. You have your board meeting planned for the 17th, correct? If I'm-
Third Wednesday, yes.
Yeah, 17th. So if you, anyway, if y'all want to work in some time as a group where you come together to talk through that consolidated list, we can do that. It's really important that y'all feel ownership of that and the, you know, the process behind it, so. For each of you, I'm going to be sharing that, the Google Drive, I'm going to be sharing folders and that with each of you who've sort of agreed to sign up for these pieces. And you'll have access to that along with whoever's helping you. Just, that'll be a way that we can communicate backward, you know, back and forth about the work there. And you'll have access to all the pieces here, you know, the things that we're doing as well, so. What else? Any other questions? What's coming to mind? How are you feeling about this process?
So yes, this is a lot of work. And I like the idea of utilizing the four parent centers and the Saturday academies. Jen, you recall, I think it was last year, you did something at International Prep. They had a Saturday academy, but you pre-planned it where everyone knew about it in advance. And it was a separate entity from the Saturday academy. So I can envision that being a viable opportunity for a listening tour at various schools across the district.
Something like, exactly like, that's where my head was going with that. Thanks for remembering that happened.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we just pre-planned it with the director of the academy, Dr., well, anyway, he wasn't here tonight. But anyway, we could pre-plan that and work it out. We have enough time. So that's, you know, doable.
Yep. I will say too, and just in terms of point person from a staff perspective, understanding who is going to be the keeper of the schedule. You don't want to get where you're scheduling on top of each other. So on the consolidated list, we'll have a place where you enter the meeting day and time. You can have two meetings running simultaneously because it's different board members, but just, you're going to need to keep in mind staff, so. But who, I don't know if that's Dr. Cresties or who that will be, who is the manager of this chaos, but he's running away right now. No. So anyway, that, this has been done by plenty of boards before. Happy to put you in touch with any of their board members that you need to, if that, you know, if you've got big curiosities about it. It is a thoughtful process. It is specific and targeted to get, you know, one set of information back so that you can use that information to give direction to your superintendent so that she can get to work on the things the community is aspiring to. so that she can get to work on the things the community is aspiring to. So that is, that is it. I will put the, put the list out to you. I have another meeting in a minute, but I'll get the list out to you by tomorrow morning. You can trust that that will be there, and as soon as y'all get through those, we can work on consolidating that, so. All right? All righty.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Boy, a lot of hard work ahead, and we will continue to use this forum to make sure that we're all working together to get the end goal of making a concentration on student outcomes. And so what I'd like to say, is Dr. Williams, would you like to close us out?
Um, that's a lot of information for a Wednesday night. I could, I was watching the faces of everyone, and I can tell that there's a lot of thought that's happening right now about how to get it done, and, and we will. We will get it done, step by step, and I believe that, you know, our children will be better off for it. So we just have to get through day by day. And, you know, I'll be looking forward to getting the information from Leslie that she's gonna be sending tomorrow, and I'll be working with my team to support in any way that we can, getting it done.
We appreciate it. The one thing I wanted to say, my experience at South Park, to have the evening during the winter when there's no parking, to open it up on a Tuesday night or a Thursday, I think in, in the park district, I would say that there would be a difficult sell to get the, the crowds there. So there's like individual things that we're gonna have to look at at each site, but I've been in contact with a couple of my PTAs to see if they would consolidate, and I think that we have, we've got a lot of opportunity here to hear the voices. So, on this, the what?
When, when we did it, we didn't limit ourselves to only community school programs. I think you came to one that we did at Dog Ears in your-
Right, right.
-in your community, and it was full. It was absolutely full that evening upstairs.
But mainly, it was full, if we had people there, but it was a lot of staff. I would say we had a limited community. I would say if we had seven or eight community members, that was a lot, and we had about 15 staff members.
Okay, see, I didn't know who that, I didn't ask who, you know, and I don't know how many staff had children that maybe-
Right, right, right.
But the room was-
Right, it was, absolutely, it was full.
You know-
Absolutely, it was full.
Just limit ourselves to, you know, to the community school programs. I think that's one, one avenue that, you know, is, is an easier way to, you know, get folks, but there may be places in the community that you know of that may be having something, you know-
I thought it was a nice crowd at the, at South Side when you did your listening tour, because there's parking, there was, I thought you, it was a really nice group. I would say there were 25 or 30 people there, absolutely. But if, so, well, this is exciting work, and so, I don't know, I'm in Florida, folks, and so I-
Good for you.
There is no more sun here today, so-
You don't even want to know what we're dealing with up here.
I know, I know, but we hit a hurricane down the street, or tornado yesterday, but we're okay. But everyone, stay safe, stay warm, I'll be back in a couple days, and I appreciate everyone's help on this committee. I, I want to really compliment Cindy and Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, they're doing a heavy lift, and they're doing a great job, and-
They most certainly are. Thank you. We've got the right people at, at my team. The three of you are doing a phenomenal job, including you, you can count yourself in, Terry.
I'm learning from these folks, that's for sure. So I appreciate it all, and stay safe tonight, and we will get to work tomorrow.
Bring back some sun.
There's really not a lot of sun here, so I came the wrong week during the East Coast, the East Coast storm, so we're all feeling it. So everyone, have a good night and stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, thank you.